Welcome to the September 20, 2018 Business Meeting. And I'd ask the County Administrator, please take the roll.
And so, good morning Commissioners. It's almost fall, beautiful day outside. So, weather's kind of cooling down, but we've got beautiful blue skies and looking forward to it. We have Mr. Stephen Madcor here, County Council, and then, as always, Mary Rathke serving as your Clerk to the Board. I'll start with the roll with Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
You.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Commissioner Schrader is out at AOC Business Association of Oregon Counties, which she will be the President of, starting in, in October?
January.
November.
In January.
November. Oh, yeah, November, because there's the annual meeting.
Coming up soon.
And also, we have Commissioner Reynolds here today, highly paid volunteer. And he is here for the Housing Authority issue on the agenda. Mr. Crapp?
Okay, so, we are doing the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Are you going to read that?
Yes, it is the Housing Authority.
You have to convene as the Housing Authority, though.
All right, so, I'll announce that the Board will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority. And again, Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds joins us when we're on this issue.
Okay. Today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda, we have five items. Approval to apply to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, set aside funding for 30 Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing vouchers. Approval to apply for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Family and Self-Sufficiency Coordinator Grant Renewal Funding. In the matter of approval to execute the General Depository Agreement Housing and Urban Development Form 51999. And in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the first quarter of fiscal year 2018-2019. And adoption of revisions to the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's bylaws.
Entertain a motion?
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, I have a question. Are these additional vouchers over what we already have? Well, that's good. That's good news. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing done? Motion carries. With that, I'll adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. First up, we have Citizen Communication, and we have Ed Gronky. And Les Poole?
Go ahead, you've got a lot more to say than I have.
Did you hear that? He says I have more to say than he does. Ed's been volunteering probably as long or longer than I have, but I'll go first. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone. I came across a little brochure the other day. I've been going through files. This is the June 30, 2016, opening of the first segment of the Sunrise Expressway. I want to thank the County, ODOT, and everyone that's put energy into that project and getting it that far. The funding to get it to the next leg out towards Damascus, towards Highway 26, is our next step. And while I'm preoccupied with the tolling measure at this time, I certainly encourage the County, I encourage ODOT, and I certainly encourage the public to weigh in on the issue, because I'm a firm believer that the benefits of extending that highway exceed the benefits of some of the other investments that have been made in the region. So, again, I want to thank everyone that worked so hard on that, including Commissioner Savis. Some of you weren't here, but we're all benefiting from it. And when you drive by Fred Meyers at 10 or 11 o'clock at night after a long day, which I've done a number of times recently, you can't believe the number of semi-trucks that are lined up there. And I ask anyone to drive down to where that nice sunrise extension runs back into 212 and watch the flow of traffic. More importantly, the flow of commerce that that highway is providing. And it's keeping Fred Meyers and Clackamas in Clackamas County. So, kudos on that, and let's stay after the Sunrise Expressway, Phase Two. As most of you know, I am a chief petitioner on a ballot measure to require a vote on tolling. Much like urban renewal or many other things in our society, is tolling the problem? Well, no, there's a place for tolling, just like there is for urban renewal and a lot of other tools that we have. And with about an 80% polling in favor of what we are doing, in other words, 80% of the people polled want the opportunity to vote before tolling is instilled on us. Tolling is a fine tool when properly used. The current plan to toll us on existing highways, the promises that there won't be that much traffic spilling on the side streets, there's no merit to it. So, I won't be any longer winded about it, except to say that we've got a ballot title that's just come out. It'll be final in a few weeks, and I look forward to getting this thing on the 2020 ballot. We're going to be gathering tens of thousands of signatures, and I'm a chief petitioner along with Julie Parrish and Mike Nierman, both state representatives. We've gotten a very good response, so excited to be part of it, and I'm going to work real hard and make it happen. I've got myself 15, 20 seconds over my time, so I better cut it off there. Thank you. I just want to, especially since you brought up the sunrise, thank ODOT for their Christmas gift one year, which was to add another lane in each direction. Originally, it was one lane in each direction, and it was a wonderful Christmas gift from ODOT. At the time, the economy was pretty bad, and there was more money. That, along with the bridge, what was the name of that bridge?
Tolbert.
Yeah, Tolbert Bridge, thank you. The Tolbert Bridge was just a wonderful opportunity for Clackamas County, and I got to thank ODOT for that extra money. Paul, and then Ken.
Yeah, next month, I'll be before the Oregon Transportation Commission, representing the Region One Act, which is, makes up, comprises of Hood River, Clackamas, Washington, and Muddelman County. I'm sure the question that come up, how do you want to fund 205? So, just curious, Les, I don't want to put you on the spot, but going to take this opportunity. What mechanism do you think would best fund the construction completion of I-205?
I'll be brief. Two things. One, I see some money that is currently in the transportation budget that could be moved, some changing of priorities, which takes a lot of effort. Furthermore, if the tolling was specifically to help pay for adding capacity and solving problems, which is how tolling is currently legally used, we don't oppose that. But that's not what's happening. And we've received vague promises that, well, we'll toll, we'll do congestion pricing for a period of time, and then, in the future, we'll start to address those capacity needs. I find that to be very, very specious. And we have a crisis now. We just opened a shelter for veterans, right? Homeless veterans, because we have a crisis. Out there on the highways, we have a crisis, and I believe that changing of priorities and backbone from citizens and officials will help get us there. And again, increasing capacity and helping pay for it with tolling is not the same as charging everyone to drive on existing infrastructure and give them vague promises of what will happen with the money in the future. Thank you, Paul.
Well, you bet. I think that's the position the Commission's taken, quite, that's precisely, that's precisely the position we've taken, that we don't want to toll existing capacity. We want to, you know, we would support a plan, perhaps, that tolls for the purpose, sole purpose of actually adding the capacity. So, you also, at first, identified some money you felt we could redirect, just curious what that may be, or maybe at a different time, you could forward me that, so I could understand what pot of money you're referencing.
Right. There are some places where priorities could be moved.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what those are.
And it's a huge project, hundreds of millions of dollars, so we understand it's got to be paid for. And priority-wise, the higher a priority a project is given, the more the money seems to appear, whether it's light rail, or a highway, or a bridge. Thanks again. All right, Ken.
Just, just one comment backing up to the sunrise. Let's hope that it doesn't take another 37 years to get the next stage done. Hopefully, we can do it a little faster than that.
Good.
That was all I had to say.
All right. With that, Ed?
I told you'd have a lot more to say. Well, for the record, I'm Ed Gronky. I live at 4912 Southeast Ryanairson Road, Jennings Lodge. I am here to make a brief statement before I leave to go to my Rotary Meeting, which is the reason I don't attend these meetings on Thursday morning. When you first announced the Veterans Village many months ago, if you remember, I appeared here, and I opposed it. I opposed it very vehemently, because, not the project, but the location, I thought it was a mistake. Since then, I've learned a great deal. I've watched what you've done. I want to compliment you on hanging in there in spite of people like me, and especially Commissioner Savis and Fisher for their commitment to this project. I think it's come out wonderfully. I think you've done a great job, and I hope this is just the first of many more you can do. As a veteran myself, many wars before you can, I can appreciate how important it is. I was lucky, when I got out after Korea, I had a job waiting, and I went ahead and built a life and built a family, never thought much about it. But things are different now, and I apologize for not realizing earlier that they are different. So, since I was so public in opposing it, I wanted to be just as public in telling you, you were right, I was wrong, and I'm glad of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Good job, Ed. One time, you guys were right.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to a couple of public hearings.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have three public hearings this morning. The first is a board order for a boundary change proposal, number CL-18-003, annexation to Clackamas River Water. And we have, Mr. Nate, oh, no, we have Mr. Ken Martin here to present this item to you.
This is an annexation to the district, it's way out in the rural area, in the old Claremont Water District, part of Clackamas River Water. It's a single lot. It just, it looks a little odd on the map, I realize, but it's, happens to sit along a 10-inch line that the district has, and the property owner wants to get water from that 10-inch line rather than from a well, and there's adequate capacity there from the district, so we'd recommend approval.
So, this is the first item. We do have somebody who wants to speak on the second item, so, I, are we, so, we're going to go through these separately, so, all right. So, with that, any Commissioners have any clarifying questions? With that, I'll open the public hearing on change, annexation, change, or proposal for CL-18007.
Three.
003, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Chair, I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL-18-003, annexation to Clackamas River Water.
Second.
I moved in second that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL-18-003, annexation to the Clackamas River Water. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? Hearing done? Motion carry. The next item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is also a boundary change proposal. We have a board order for item CL-18-007, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. And again, Mr. Martin here is here to present this item to you.
And as in the past, this is an annexation to the district that also serves the city of Happy Valley. The proposed area is within the city of Happy Valley. It's almost 13 acres and is supposedly going to be ultimately developed as an elementary school. The district provides service through Wes, and Wes has lines in the area that can provide sewer service to the area, and we'd recommend approval.
All right. Any Commissioners have any clarifying questions? With that, I'll open the public hearing, and I believe we have one person, Lance, who would like to speak on this matter? Anyone else? Fill out a blue card and turn it in.
Yes, I'm Lance Allard. I live at 12955 Southeast Rochelle Court, right along the annexation there. And the only thing I have is that the annexation there is going up Vogel Road, and it's already started. The sewer is already being dug in. They shut the road down the first couple days of construction completely, wouldn't let anybody through unless you lived right there, and with no notice. I hope the rest of the project doesn't go this way. And the other thing is, they're building an elementary school on a, on a road that isn't even a two-lane road. It's more like a one-and-a-half-lane road. Two school buses would have a hard time going by each other on the road. Right now, we've had, since construction started on the school, we've had four wrecks, people in ditches, including dump trucks. Two dump trucks cannot go by each other. They're having problems with that on the road now. So, it's just something to keep in mind, that I hope the project doesn't go on like it started before the annexation, no notice that they were shutting the road down to the neighborhood. And the traffic that was already on that road, I hope it is considered in the rest of the development in that area. And I thank you for your time.
And thank you. I'm sure that the building of the school is going to require some upgrades to the roads, but we'll take a look at that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
That was, actually, Mike, if there's no one else already to speak, I was going to ask, maybe if some staff in the room can actually speak. They are going to have to bring up the roads and everything else to standards, I presume?
I don't know, there's anyone in staff here that could answer that question?
Yeah, we'll have to follow up.
It's in the city limits of Happy Valley, but...
It's going to be their decision. Whatever's done with the roads, I've...
I see a hand up.
Rick Maxwell. You have to talk into the mic.
Hi, I'm Rick Maxwell with the Engineering Division in Department of Transportation Development. Vogel Road is on the list. Next month, you'll be hearing about that. That road is up for transfer to the city of Happy Valley. And it was, it was paved along with Hemrick and Troje two years ago, but the gentleman's right, it is very narrow, and I don't know, I don't know about Happy Valley's plans to enhance the roadway. But I just want to let you know that's up for transfer soon.
It might be something, since we haven't transferred it yet...
Right.
...that we would make an effort to demand some improvements. Okay. We can do that, right?
Before we transfer it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Well, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL-18-007, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second? I moved in second that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL-18-007, annexation to Clackamas Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done? Motion carries. Next item?
Okay, this third public hearing is to consider a board order accepting a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Canby for a portion of South Fur Street. We have Mr. Rick Maxwell here to present this item to you.
Please. Good morning Commissioners. Sorry. My name is Rick Maxwell. I'm with the Engineering Division at the Department of Transportation and Development. And today, we have before you a request to transfer jurisdiction of Fur Street to the city of Canby. Fur Street is a county road, currently both inside and outside Canby city limits. Currently, the entire area has seen extensive annexation, and there are future plans for development on both sides of Fur Street, including the portion to the south, which is not yet within city limits. This request has been thoroughly discussed by staff of both jurisdictions. Transferring Fur Street will result in streamlined permitting and construction standards consistent with the surrounding Canby street system. That's improving the efficiencies and coordination of development, future maintenance, and public service requests. Fur Street is approximately .37 miles long. The $56,000 cost of this transfer, excuse me, is equivalent to the cost of two inches of asphalt for the entire length of the roadway. Not the installation, but just the cost of the asphalt. Notice for today's action was published for four consecutive weeks in the Canby Herald Newspaper. And this request is consistent with the county's practice and policy of partnering with local jurisdictions to provide necessary government services at the least cost to our citizens. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to respond, and we also have the city of Canby here, if you have anything specific for them.
The whole city fit in this room, huh? So, actually, maybe a comment. So, we have two ways to really transfer a road to a city. One is to rebuild it to county standards, and the other is to give them money.
Right.
To put two-inch blacktop, basically, on the road. And in this case, we're giving them $56,000 to pave that section of road.
Yes, and I'm not sure that they'll use it on paving, but that's just kind of, it's written into the UGMA from 1992, that that's the price of a transfer. Yep.
All right, yeah, we've been discussing this with regards to the VRF, so, all right. Any further questions? Oh, Ken?
Actually, before we, I want to ask something of them on the previous issue, so, before we go to the consent agenda, if they'd just stay briefly, but we'll take care of this first.
Okay. All right. Open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Close the public hearing and consider a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order accepting a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Canby for a portion of South Fur Street.
Second.
It's moved in second that we accept a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Canby for a portion of South Fur Road. Then I know who to complain to when there's, when it falls apart. And any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done? Motion carries. And so, Ken had a question.
Yes, backing up to the school issue and the road...
Oh, on Vogel?
Yes, on the access road. Would you be able to find out what the school and/or the city of Happy Valley intends for that road?
Yes.
Prior to us actually having to do any work on it, and then, we can figure out what we need to do to make sure that's a safe road? And then, make, would you please make sure that the gentleman who spoke before us today gets that information also?
If we have an email or address, something?
We've got it.
We got it.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I was going to say, I'm sure there's conditions of approval that went along with the building of the school, so there may be plans already in place for that, but I'll find out.
That's what occurred to me, that they may already have just got it in their head as to what they're going to do, and it would be helpful if, if that is the case, that the gentleman knows exactly what they are.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had one gentleman arrive late. Charles, why don't you go ahead, under public comment, but I need to warn you, because I know you, that we all need to get out of here to drive to Estacada.
I saw that on your agenda packet. That's why I'm cognizant of it, and I didn't break any speed limits coming here today.
You've got three minutes.
Multiple issues, the prime one I'm here for that caused me to search your agenda. First off, my name is Charles Armspay. I'm representing the Birds Hill CPONA. We're in the northwest corner of Clackamas County, northeast corner of Lake Oswego Urban Growth Management Area. My address is 170 Southwest Birds Hill Road, Portland, Oregon, 97219-8502. It's a Clackamas County tax lot. I've been going about 100 miles an hour since June, annexation issues with Lake Oswego. Urban Growth Management Agreement does need to be, take a look at, and the whole process of who maintains roads, et cetera, and you've gotten some communication from people on the west side. My primary thing that's driving me right now is the D Avenue Improvement Project in Lake Oswego and its effects on OR-43, aka State Street, in Lake Oswego jurisdiction. It's, my affectionate name for the one segment is now the D Avenue Spillway. This is going to cause problems on Highway 43 from Tullegger Boulevard South, which is a Clackamas County road into Lake Oswego. This is a constrained, very constrained, not a hyper-constrained, but it is a very constrained transition road. It affects tram at buses, it affects school buses, it affects pedestrians. In fact, you should probably put signs up giving out free socks, because I have to carry two pair at least between fall, winter, spring to get to Lake Oswego City Hall. I have to afford E Avenue and, and, E Avenue and State Street to get from the end of the Tullegger Boulevard bike path into Lake Oswego at E Avenue and State Street, which is a Katy Car Wash. D Avenue is no better. They're putting about $10 million bucks into D Avenue between State Street West to 1st, 10th Street in Lake Oswego. This is going to cause problems. The segment between State Street West uphill, 27% grade, has minimal to zero gradings to capture stormwater, so that's why I'm calling it a D Avenue spillway. It's about 400 feet long, and there are no grates apparent in this section of roadway that I can see. And this gets into ADA. I sent a link to a presentation I rapidly put together on Sunday. I've gotten no response from ODOT. Their meeting was this morning. I want action done stat. They're supposed, I got an email yesterday from the city of Lake Oswego announcing they're going to be doing construction and road closure, lane closure, travel lane closure of southbound lanes on State Street in the next two weeks. People need to get their eyeballs on it, and it needs to be adjusted now. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not the one, I didn't look at the plans specifically while this project evolved. First Edition Neighborhood in, in Lake Oswego's basically washed their hands of the project. They are so antagonistic towards it, how it's evolved, why it's evolved, so on and so forth. This gets into multiple projects in that segment, including Tryon Creek, the river crossing that you are discussing shortly afterwards, so on and so forth. Communication's abysmal and needs an improved stat.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda and ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a service agreement with Genoa LLC, partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division Beaver Creek in participation with the three forty B Pharmacy Services Agreement. Approval of a services agreement with Genoa LLC, partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division Hilltop in participation with the three forty B Pharmacy Services Agreement. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Trail School District number forty-six for the Sandy School Based Health Center. Approval of a professional services agreement for Clackamas County Health Centers Division with Comp Health Local Tenem for Temporary Physician Staff. Approval of a service agreement with Kroger Company, partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division in participation with the three forty B Pharmacy Services Agreement. Approval of a local grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of a local grant agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission for evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of a local grant agreement with Toto Hutos for evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of a local grant agreement with Northwest Family Services for evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of a professional service agreement with Craig Warren to provide services to the Associated Emergency Medical Services Medical Director. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Grant Agreement with Oregon Health Science and University for the Oregon Care Coordination Program. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for the Reduction of Opioid Overdose and Death Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University for trauma-informed care training. Approval of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD funding for Section one oh eight loan pool. Approval of Agreement one eight five six nine with Ride Connection to provide funding for rides provided by volunteer drivers under the Ride Together Program. Approval of Agreement one eight five four nine with Ride Connection to provide funding for vehicle maintenance of Ride Connection owned vehicles operated by urban community-based Clackamas County Transportation Consortium members. Approval of Amendment one eight five five six with Ride Connection to provide funding for vehicle maintenance of Ride Connection owned vehicles operated by rural community-based Clackamas County Transportation Consortium members. Approval of Agreement one eight five six eight with Ride Connection to provide funding for rides provided by volunteer drivers under the Vets Drive Vets Program. Approval of Agreement one eight five seven three with Ride Connection to provide funding for specialized service rides provided by members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium. Approval of Agreements one eight five seven four and one eight five six five with Ride Connection to provide funding for rides provided by members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium. And Approval of Agreement numbers one eight five seven five, one eight five seven six, one eight five seven seven with Ride Connection to provide funding for ride, provided by social services transportation-reaching people. Under the Department of Transportation Development, Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for funding for the Oak Grove, Lake Oswego Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge Facility Study. Approval of twenty forty Planning and Development Grant Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro for the Clackamas County Park Avenue Development and Design Standards Contract. Approval of Transportation and Growth Management Grant Award for a Clackamas County Transit Development Plan. Approval of a Board Order Adopting a Vacation of Holman Road. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Canby regarding the transfer of road authority of a portion of South Fur Street. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Canby regarding the transfer of a portion of South Fur Street. Under Tourism and Cultural Affairs, approving the conveyance of Development Agency Assets to Clackamas County by and through the Department of Tourism and Cultural Affairs related to the Mount Hood Cultural Center and Museum. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes and a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon for access to the Oregon State Police Automated Biometric Identification System. Under Administration, approval of a Board Order Appointing an Interim Clackamas County Planning Director. Under Community Corrections, approval of a Contract Amendment Number Three and Renewal Number Two with David Schultsler Innovative Counseling Enterprise for Sex Offender Treatment Services. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a Grant and Cooperative Agreement with the Department of Interior Bureau of Land Management for the Dump Stopper Program. And Approval of a Contract with CXT for the Purchase of a Precast Concrete Restroom at Barton Park. Under Technology Services, approval of Amendment Number One for a Service Level Agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the city of Sandy. Under the Development Agency, approving the Conveyance of Development Agency Assets to Clackamas County by and through the Department of Transportation and Cultural Affairs related to the Mount Hood Cultural Center and Museum. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Storm Line Easement for Clackamas Corporate Park. And Under Water Environment Services, approval of Acquisition of an Easement from the city of Gladstone in support of the Eighty-Second Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Project. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Excellent job.
Woo! I know, I think you need a round of applause for that.
She had told me she practiced to get it down.
I got it down to six minutes.
Very good.
And here I was gonna ask her to repeat it all, but I.
All right. Do any commissioners wish to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Paul, we good? I'm just kidding.
Sonia's lights on.
Oh, Sonia's lights on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna pull anything, but I do wanna give a, just a little special thanks to Mary Ratcliffe and Gerald Fox from Lake Oswego on the issue that's up in our consent agenda regarding the bridge, the pedestrian bridge that we are approving for Metro to receive the grant. There's been a group of citizens that have long been working on this for quite some time. And the thought that's gone behind it, that's already been done, is pretty substantial. And I've been blessed with receiving quite a bit of information. And so I am just thankful for that citizen involvement and input on that.
Great, Ken, thank you.
Yeah, and again, I, I don't wish to pull anything, but I did wanna make a comment on one of the items, and it is the item with Clackamas Broadband Exchange. We are going to be doing an agreement with the city of Sandy. The reason I wanted to bring that up is that this program now, I had been quoting a half a million dollars in savings that our broadband exchanges provided taxpayers. I heard from one of our staff that that might be a bit low, and I asked them to recalculate the numbers and find out what, what they believe the true savings would be. And we are now saving taxpayers with this program more than a million dollars a year. So it is, it is paying for itself every step of the way. And as I say, it gets cash on the barrelhead as we expand the program. And it's saving taxpayers a lot of money, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ken, Paul.
Well, in light of Commissioner Fisher's comments, I do wanna say that it is indeed true that there's been a lot of activity, citizen activity in the past on the, on a, on a bridge. And it was a car bridge initially that was discussed going way back, which this one is not. This is a bike ped bridge, maybe with some feasibility and other aspects. I'm looking at it all things. But I would encourage, because I have a closer relationship with the east side of the river, and you reside in the other side of the river. So I would encourage you, I've heard most, mostly positive stuff on the west side of the river. But I have heard most of the negative comments of that smaller portion are coming from the west side in your neighborhood. So I would ask maybe that you help, maybe work through, help us all work through that.
Sure, well, I think robust public input and conversation is essential to any effort.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we have support, as much in involvement on this feasibility study. There will be an extensive public process, but we, I think we need to play a strong role in that in getting, and find out what those voices are, what their concerns are. And, and that's precisely what this feasibility is all about, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I've had a lifetime experience with that bridge, the old railroad bridge, walking across it myself when I was a kid.
Yeah, I've heard stories from my son, too, and I don't like.
My favorite one is climbing up the wood ladder that used to be on the side as the ladder would break as you went up it. But you think as a kid I, I didn't keep going, I did. But.
Fearless Chair Bernard.
Yes.
I must say, we have someone in the audience who's crossed it as well many times. Right?
Oh, Chip.
That's right.
Yeah, you'd have to, have to run across when a train came to get to where you could avoid the train, stand to the side.
It's a good thing that's not an Amtrak train, because they go pretty fast.
All right, with that, see, we had a motion, did we have a motion?
No, we have not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You got a promotion.
It's been moved in second that, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, we're on to the administrator updates.
Yes, and I just have a couple of items. First, you know, is a follow-up to our Monday groundbreaking ceremony at the Tri-City Wastewater Plant Facility. Construction has begun in earnest on the third digester there on site. And just wanted to make sure you knew that we're underway. This expansion will help to ensure the protection of public health, the environment, and future economic growth in Clackamas County. Construction is expected to be completed by 2021. And I have a really good feel-good story about how quickly we're able to respond to people in need. Last Wednesday, the county administrator's office heard from a woman named Carrie who was very concerned about her elderly mother relocating here from Alaska. Carrie was frustrated in trying to make advance arrangements for her mother's care. And so we reached out to our Social Services Team and Health, Housing and Human Services, who in turn immediately reached out to the state of Oregon to see what the trouble was. And really, to kind of make a long story short, five calendar days later, Carrie called and voiced her thankfulness and gratefulness. She said that just two days after she contacted us, the family had a wonderful caseworker assigned, and a thorough plan soon followed. She couldn't stop thanking the county and stated that we'd given her family peace of mind and restored her faith in government. And I just wanna thank Carrie for letting us know, and we're always happy to help. And special thanks to Brenda Durbin with our Social Services Division in Health, Housing and Human Services, and also Julie Larson in the county administration office for their work to make that happen. So I have one other item just to share with you. Last week, we did not have a business meeting scheduled or a policy session scheduled, or, excuse me, just the business meeting was not scheduled. And I did, in reliance upon the county code, take action on one contract matter for you. It was an item for Water Environment Services via the Procurement Division of the Finance Department, and involves the approval of a public improvement contract between Water Environment Services and HP Civil Incorporated for the Hoodland Water Resource Recovery Facility Modernization Project. And I'm just doing diligence by letting you know that I did that, and that's it.
Now, one thing I'd be interested in is that property issue that we were having up there. How that was resolved?
Oh, we'll find out.
I never really heard anything about what happened. Anyway, I could take that offline. All right, with that, we're to Commissioner Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We need to be quick, because we are going out to the Estacada Chamber today for their meeting where we're all going to share with the business members there. I just wanna highlight what's so important in what we do, and we all do a lot of it, is all of the very important community connections that we make across this county. And one of my favorite from last week, and there were quite a few that we all were a part of, but I just wanna highlight the Family Fest in Stafford. There was so much community celebration, a very good display of community resources. There were llamas, there were owls, there was, there were children people games. It was an old-time family gathering. It was really, really wonderful. And I'm so glad that my fellow commissioners were there at different times during the day. We weren't all there together. I know that Commissioner Humberton and Paul and I briefly crossed paths there, but it was great. So in the spirit of community, I just wanna say thank you to my commissioners, and we will be doing some more of that later today.
Great, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I, I appreciate this earlier today, Mr. Gronky coming and speaking about the Vets Village. We, a week ago, we did our, kind of our opening of that. It was a modest event, and it was, you know, it's sombering that we are in that situation, that we have to cope with some of the aspects of, of houselessness or homelessness. And, and it's, it's a great opportunity, in a sense, to try to help, help our veterans who deserve better. And I, what I think was refreshing about this, and I think it was the gist of my comments on Thursday, was is that this is a concept that was brought forth by veterans, some elected, some not, but all veterans. And we followed a model that was proffered by Lane County. And the concept from start to finish and all the input really came from a lot of veterans. We had a tremendous showing of veterans groups. I do know that a lot of the veterans and organizations wanted to be part of that and speak to their, to their services they provide, but we, you know, we just simply didn't have the time or the capacity to, to do that. In all fairness, we would've been there a long, long time. But I just wanna just commend and thank all the folks that were involved in that, whether you're a veteran or not. But it was difficult, because we had a lot of, we had a lot of comments, and some of them were positive and some of them were not along the way in the last two and a half years. But, you know, it is very refreshing to know that, again, this is something that was supported. It was great to see the outpouring of support and the continuance of that outpouring of support in the future for that, that project. I also wanna just thank the folks. Friday night, Commissioner Fisher and I both attended the Children's Center fundraiser. And it's always great, really, to see the outpouring of compassion and support, financial support for that. I, I was writing out the check last year. Could not attend the Children's Center event that they have, because it happened to land on a business meeting that we always clash on. So I wrote in my note, you know, sorry, I couldn't be there, but, you know, there's been a, and to, I wanted to speak to Mr. Soma, Tom Soma, I, I think was perhaps instrumental. He wrote back, and they did change the, the night of the event to Friday evening. And so we were able to attend. And again, it's really a refreshing, the generosity and outpouring of support by, by citizens on behalf of the Children's Center was just fantastic. So I just wanna say thanks to all that contributed to that, to that cause.
Thank you. Commissioner Humbertson?
Humbertson.
Twenty-two months later, still can't get it. Well, there was quite a number of events and meetings that I went to over the week. I'm not gonna belabor that, we talked about it two days ago. I just wanna hit a couple of things. One is serving on a subcommittee for AOC, the Association of Oregon Counties, on the cap and trade issue. My efforts have been to minimize the, the negative impacts and maximize the positive impacts that are potential in a cap and trade bill, because it's been made pretty clear that, from the leadership in the legislature and the, and the senate, that some sort of a cap and trade bill is gonna come forward. So my efforts were to, to work with my colleagues to work on how you make, make the best of this, rather than just trying to stand in the way of it only to get run over by the train. It's, and that's pretty counterproductive. I wanna make sure that when it's done, it doesn't cost people their jobs. There were a number of celebrations around Patriots' Day and veterans, including our, our opening of the Vets Village. But I wanted to do one thing today and single out Chuck Robbins, who happens to be in the back of the room. Didn't, didn't know he was gonna show up or not. But on our consent agenda was an eleven million dollar loan portfolio that's been made available. A big part of the reason that's available for our housing, our low-income housing, is because of Mr. Robbins' efforts. And we point out that for the eighty years that our housing authority has existed, Mr. Robbins has been here for fifty percent. Mr. Robbins has been here for 50% of that time. I don't know what we're going to do with the loss of that institutional memory when he leaves, but I did wanna compliment him on that loan portfolio that you've put together. Thank you. And I'll leave it at that and go to the dog. Got it this time. This is Rudy.
Oh.
He's a quiet guy. He is a four-year-old Australian Shepherd mix. He's a bit anxious, so please be patient when you meet him. He's very sweet and just needs some time to get to know you. He will do best with children over the age of nine. He will need regular brushing and grooming to keep his hair tangle-free and beautiful. He's ready to be your new best friend and will be waiting to meet you. For more information about Rudy and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna add a little to the Veterans Village thing, you know, along the way, we all learned a lot. And one, one is that it's transitional housing. If you actually call it temporary housing, you, they can actually lose some of their benefits, right? And I didn't know that until recently.
It's a shelter, it's not really housing.
Yeah, it's not housing, it's transitional shelter. If you call it transitional housing, it's housing, then they lose their benefit. But I never knew that before. And of course, this could never have been done without all the volunteers and the work that our staff did to make this project happen, and that's countywide staff. Because we went, it's the first time that we know of, that we actually went through the land use process and did it the right way. And I also wanna thank Paul for, for his extra effort volunteering to move the pods from up here to down there until late in the evening where they had to use flashlights. So, appreciate your work on that, and the folks who helped you do it, the Johnsons, who helped you do that. And, oh, there's music, they must be pulling me off. And with that, we're heading up to Estacada to talk about the work we're doing, and pretty proud of Estacada. They've done a lot, and they're downtown over the years. It's very attractive, and hopefully, we'll have some news in the future about potential business opportunities. I know their business park is almost full, which, which is great. That's what I heard. One thing they do need is natural gas, so if anybody has a way to raise millions of dollars and get the pipe up there, let's do it. Okay?
About that, I heard there is a method that was considerably cheaper, and we didn't know about this. Talk to you about that.
All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.